And.
More.
Yeah.
Can I come over and sit at the corner?
I can see.
Yes, sure.
Science matters to me. I know it doesn't Anthony Fauci. I love it if you're vaxxed. I don't need you protected. Vaxxed. I love all the super spreaders that haven't resulted in Red Sox last night.
You you won last night?
No, I watched.
Are you watching? Yeah, okay.
It's really love bar. But she was excited.
That's good.
So. Two nights in a row, me and mom watching Red Sox. Doesn't get any better than this.
I'm not telling anyone, all right?
No, please, dude.
I'm gonna be your friend.
My parent care.
I'm not I'm not gonna share that with anybody.
I'm okay with it. She can't see, you know, instead of.
So.
Losing her eyesight.
Did you have to actually like interpret them?
Well, I do sometimes.
Yeah, that's interesting.
And shopping.
Yeah, wow, yeah.
Once a week, it's but it's a blessing.
You know, she's not gonna be around forever, so.
Hope she takes me with her.
Yeah, it's not a lot of amusement left, I don't think, to be really honest.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Linda.
Well, the only question I have, have they fixed that connection so that the people on the phone won't get the echoing now from the small conference room?
I don't know, Linda. Uh, how's that?
You would be the judge.
Okay, well, I just know Brian Lob and I thought there was some issue. Okay, we'll try it. Great, thank you.
Hi, Don. Hi, Richard.
Hello.
Hello, everybody, on this gorgeous day.
Yeah, isn't it something? I can't get over it. Wild. Irony. Hi, Brian.
I think Richard's gorgeous.
Yeah, hello, hello. And tomorrow's supposed to be nice also, not?
Uh, yes, yeah, 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 yeah. I have the very good fortune. I was getting my house outside of my house painted this week and um. You know, I was I was the last house on his list and I was kind of nervous, but it's turned out just beautifully. The temperature's been like fifty to seventy all week, which is perfect.
Yeah, Melinda and I drove by this morning and admired the work being done. But you were yelling at the painters. You were screaming.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Actually, you know.
That's not true.
It's amazing to me how quickly they work. I love it. Great. Hi, Melissa, how are you? Yep, unmute. There you go. Here comes Leah.
How's it going?
Great, great, really good. All right, Melissa, yeah. And let's see. Rod, do you have uh anyone with you at town hall?
Uh, yes, I have Jeff Goodrich.
Hi, Jeff, nice to see you. Okay, then we are ready to roll. Jeff Lebel unfortunately is detained with work, but he will try to join us around seven thirty, just so everybody knows. And um and let's see. From the DRB, we have Don McCabe. Thank you so much for coming. And Richard, you know, what might be helpful, we just, I don't know, does everyone know everyone? I'm not sure everyone does. But I'll take a moment. We'll introduce the planning commission and then um then the DRB, then we'll start our meeting. Is that okay, Rod? You you okay with that?
Yeah, sure.
Good. So I'm Jackie Allen and I'm chairing the planning commission um this year again. Happy to be back. Been with the planning commission. I think this is year seven, although I've maybe maybe not, maybe year six, kind of lost track. And Jeff, do you want to go next, Jeff Goodrich?
Uh, yeah, uh, so I don't know, I've been involved since nineteen ninety or so, and I love Richard.
Thank you, Jeff. Don, your turn.
Uh, who are you calling?
I I'm sorry, I was just calling Don. I'm just going in order of the names that I see on the screen. I'm sorry if it's erratic, but uh. Don, I know you're on the DRB. Want to talk to us about how long you've been on?
I've been on since ancient history. Uh, I don't know, Rod knows, four years, five years.
Yeah, five.
I've loved every moment.
Thank you for your service, Don. We appreciate it. Richard?
Uh, Richard Sucker, I've been on the DRB for a little longer than Don, maybe six or seven years. And the reason I left the planning commission was Jeff.
Ernie?
Hi, I've actually been on both of these. I was I might have been on the planning commission since two thousand eighteen. Uh, but I was on the DRB since it was first I was in the first group of people uh since two thousand three. Prior to that, so I think this is gonna be interesting to get back with seeing some of my old colleagues.
Great, thanks, Ernie. Brian, I think you're on mute, Brian. You have to open yourself up. There you go.
Yep, thanks, Jackie. So I'm Brian Low. Guess as long as Ernie and Leah have now, three years.
Uh huh, great. Linda Gray?
Hi, and I'm a newbie on the DRB and just got appointed this summer, so I believe I've been at two meetings so far.
Terrific. We could use some some new eyes. That'll be great. How about Melissa?
I think I have been on the planning commission for six years. Um, I think at this point, which seems crazy. I am also taking notes, so if you see me looking off to the side and typing away, I I'm not doing other work. I I am listening. I'm just taking notes.
Thank you, Melissa. Thanks for that. Leah?
Hi, everyone. I'm Leah Romano, and just like noted before, I've been on for a couple of years with Brian and Ernie.
Great, thanks. Okay, so. Did I miss anybody? Yeah, go ahead, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I just want to note Tom Gray uh was a former planning commission member and chair, friend and mentor uh whom I appreciate so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good. So our first item of business tonight is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Don, thanks, Melissa. And a second, was that your hand, Jeff? Thank you very much. Great, we got a second. Um, any um on the agenda? I guess. The one item I would add that I mentioned earlier, the affordable housing subcommittee letter, Jeff is gonna try to join us, Jeff Lebel, in time for that, but I would. Think the group, we should wait until he gets here to 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 address that since he's so involved. Are we all okay with that? Okay, all right, super. And here's Arlene. Welcome, Arlene, glad you're here. Okay, so then um do we have all in favor of approving the agenda? Make sure you see your hands. Good, I'm seeing all the hands, all the hands. Thank you. All the hands of the planning commission members. That's great. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Linda, do you have any comment to make? Okay.
I'm all set at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any other comments anyone wants to make as a member of the public? Okay. All right, hearing none. We're moving then to um our big item on the agenda, which is the discussion with the development review board on your experience. Two thousand and nine zoning regs and the two thousand thirteen subdivision regs. Arlene, I know you're chairing the DRB and thank you for your service there. We just spent a few minutes before you joined us introducing ourselves. Uh, I think you might know all the members here. Is there anyone that you don't know? Still on mute. Did you find the mute button? There you go. Still on mute. Still on mute, Arlene. Not yet. We can't hear you.
Can Rod take her off the or whoever's in charge take the mute off?
I don't know.
All I can do is ask her, but she's gonna find the button and it's gonna work.
There she goes.
I did it. I unmuted myself again, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
But Rod doesn't want to keep me unmuted.
And I just want to say the purpose of this, I just I'm so pleased for you that you've taken the time to be with us. I think it's the first meeting that. I know it's for myself, but in my term on the planning commission that we've never met before, so we welcome you tonight. And the purpose here is an information exchange. We want to listen and learn and hear all about your work and your, as I say. What you what do you want us to hear? What is your experience working with these regulations? As you know. We'll be working on revising these regulations and your input is certainly very, very important to us. Okay? Arlene, did you have an idea of how you wanted this to flow?
Well, yes, let me um start first of all by thanking you. I am, I realized when we were putting this together, the most longstanding member of the DRB. I don't know how I got there so fast, but I am. And I also don't ever remember a joint meeting with the planning commission. And I really, really appreciate the invitation to enter into a dialogue with you. So let me just explain that in terms of. Um, I assume you want to have some sense of how working with the present regulations has been for us. We're a seven-person board, three of whom are new. Matt. Matt Stewart has been a member for the longest of the three of them, and it's short. Um, I don't even know that it's a year. And Linda Gray and Patrick Bradley are really new members. And haven't had very much experience in using. So I will speak from my own experience, if that's okay with you.
Um, good.
My sense and my hope, my sense is that these regulations have been written a long time ago. I don't know if they are simply corrections or fiddling with a format that has been in existence since the beginning of the regulations. So my overriding desire would be a reformatting. I find the subdivision regs and the zoning regs difficult to deal with. There's an awful lot of cross-referencing and you look at one table and it sends you to somewhere else that sends you to somewhere else. And if you looked at um my notebook, it's just full of tabs so that I can easily go from one tab to another tab to find things. So um and I'll use as an example, in the table of contents, there's something that's in the condition subdivision regs that says definitions. And I was trying to remember quite precisely um the definition of an interested person. Because that affects our hearing and who has what powers. And so I went to the definitions section and I really couldn't even find it. And stuck away in a little corner was off, sort of almost off the page, was a definition with a statutory reference. So um it was difficult to find and it was important to me, but that took me one step further. So I looked up the statutory reference in Vermont statutes and it took me to other towns' land use regulations. And I think this is probably really important. As I looked at them, they were much more coherent. Much easier to access, probably longer, but quite precise. And so it's my. Um, notion that if we were to look at formatting of other town regulation, land use regulations. And try to follow that rather than just fiddling with the existing format. I think that would be not only helpful to the members of our board, but would also be very helpful to the public. For to applicants who are having to appear before the DRB in their understanding and their ability to use. What you've got. That's that's actually my biggest recommendation. Because I just I just find I'm forever flipping back and forth and back and forth and there are tables and the tables relate to something. Just you'll you'll see. So then this morning, this afternoon, I was thinking about it and then I was wondering, and I don't know the answer, and I'm not home right now, so I don't even have my books with me. I was wondering if the land use regulations are actually on the town website or on our website. But I was also remembering there are other organizations or other times when I've had to deal with. I don't know, manuals. And I'm not techie enough to do this, but it would be a wonderful. Well, somebody who was could have the have all these subdivision regs and zoning regs online. In a format where if you wanted to get to. I don't know, definitions, you could click on definitions and get directly there so that you wouldn't have to flip through forty-seven pages. In order to get where you're going, which would, I think, make an enormous difference. And then people wouldn't have to have all these notebooks because they could use the online version and they could navigate it very easily. So that's my biggest recommendation, but because I know you're looking for something specific, I'll do this very fast.
It's okay. We want to hear it. You're doing fine.
So my um. Memory is that many times things are ambiguous and I know that when you go through this, I have great faith that you'll all figure this out. But the two that stuck out in my mind was one, when the issue with the issue was the height of a fence. And I can't tell you how much time we spent measuring. We didn't know whether the height of the fence started from the pre-existing grade. And the fence had already been put up or did you finish grade and did you look in between? And we had absolutely no idea how to handle it. Um, we did, but I never felt very secure that we had done it appropriately. And the other one that sticks out in my mind is um home. And we struggled with a home home industry is something that's allowed in the village district. But it doesn't say if you can have multiple home industries in the same building, the same house. So those are the kind, they just stick in my mind, but I know those ambiguities will all be that you'll find all of them. So that's really what I have to say, but again, thank. Hope we can continue the dialogue. Great faith that all of you have the leadership ability, the intellect and the interest. And that you're gonna do a great job getting us better land use regulations.
I had something, Jackie.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think Jeff, Ernie and I were planning commission together. I was on, I think, for about eight years. And went through a cycle or two of trying to rewrite regulations and I don't disagree with Arlene at all. And there are several examples along the way, but I was witness to how arduous a job it is. The this is tough. Um, maybe it's tough for those of you not on now on the planning commission, but but under Phil and not because of Phil. We struggled with just the difference between a comma and a semicolon and. Getting through it all was really hard. So I only want to say that although I agree with Arlene, I understand the task because I was there. Uh, I understand how difficult the task is.
Of writing the regulations. Is that what you're saying, Richard? Right, actually, writing them clearly is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay. Uh huh, good, good. Um. Don, you want to make some comments and then we can go back around again to folks?
Sure. Um, on my way into town in the spring, summer and fall, I'm greeted by the garden in your front yard, which is the most beautiful welcoming sight.
You'll put that in the zoning regs. Must have garden. Beautiful.
Anything to add to what what has been said so far?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I don't have.
Okay, all right. Linda, would you like to make a comment? I know you're two, two, two meetings into this, but I mean, just trying to get up to speed with the regs. Is there any other? Any observations that you would make?
No, no, I haven't. I haven't had enough experience on this, so no, I have no comments to add.
Okay, thanks, thanks, okay.
I would just quickly want to add on our Arlene's example of the fence.
Yep.
Not only was the material we had available to us not very helpful, nor was the state. Where we were. Uh, and offended and I don't mind if we don't focus on offense, but offense is a common bearer, a barrier between properties and. It's pretty important we get it right. So we struggled there for sure.
Richard, do any other examples pop out for you that, you know, areas of the regulations where, you know, you've tripped over a couple of times? Or particularly arduous, trying to make the interpretation? Just trying to ferret out any more ideas or examples that may be top of mind.
Um, maybe I should defer to Rod because I know before him, Phil claimed he kept a list of issues that came up. To uh that came up because the DRB was struggling with interpretations or definitions. And Rod, does such a list exist or notes of any kind about what we should go back and scratch our heads over?
Well, yes, kind of. I think what I've turned up is a document from Phil that was more, I would describe it more as notes to himself than than maybe anybody else. Um, so he identified things that had already been changed, minor changes that were needed, major changes that are needed. And things that are okay the way they were. And basically was working his way through the regulations and each one of those categories had a different color. And he was basically color coding on on computer, you know, chunks of text fitting into each one of those categories. And so I think it's fair to share that most of it needed major changes. So that's not a surprise. Uh, I think that the. Areas that I've talked about with Phil in the years that I've been here include some things that have been. Sometimes further complicated or confused by the state and then some things that have been sort of made redundant or irrelevant again. Due to legislative changes um at the state level. So a couple of things come to mind. In the time since Phil left, the state has, through statute, revised the. The conditions for accessory dwelling units twice and made the. The this category of use much more readily accessed and then also much larger. So Norge still has a minimum or a maximum size that's much more generous than the maximum size that the state imposes. And has um. More through case law than anything else, kind of worked its way towards the notion that accessory dwelling units are a. As of right form of application for use anywhere there's an existing house. So there's a couple of example, other examples like that that I'm pointing to where. Things have things have moved or shifted in the time since Phil was working on it and since the planning commission was last working on it. Uh, I've got basically a list of those things. Um, I think that at this point, based on what Arlene's had to say and in my own work, I would. Rather than tinkering with each sentence or each section, recommend an entirely new structure. I would recommend that both the subdivision and zoning regulations be placed in one document. So that basically the subdivision section was a chapter of the land use regulations. Because there's a lot of redundant language. All the administrative stuff that's in the zoning, the current subdivision regulations also occurs in the zoning regulations. And so when you look at it as a sort of a printed document, it's a three-ring binder and it's about an inch and a half thick. If you fill it out, the admin, the administrative things from subdivision and made them the same as the zoning regulations. You immediately lose kind of half an inch, maybe a little bit less. I think that the other thing that the document. Um, has about it that that Phil didn't talk about, but I think had expectations about um in and out conversations was very clear about. Was that it just wasn't a very accessible document in two different ways. One was. It wasn't built as an electronic document from the beginning, which meant that it was very difficult to search. Uh, and then the other one was that it had, uh, it was cheap. It was just words on paper. Um, which was about the limit of the technology at the time it was drafted. And it doesn't have any illustrations or sketches or drawings to facilitate people's understanding of what the regulations are calling for. And so a contemporary zoning document, it's owning regulation document should be color. It should be searchable by virtue of being a searchable PDF from the beginning. And it should be hotlinked so that the table of contents that Arlene was talking about, you would just scroll down with a mouse or your finger on a touchscreen. And just tap what you needed and it would take you there. Um, and then lastly, it should be rich with illustrations and diagrams so that the applicants and the DRB. Are able to actually understand and apply the regulations with an understanding. That comes that comes from looking at a drawing or a sketch rather than having to build either on paper or in their head some kind of a drawing. As an example, after having read the text, which in this instance is frequently ambiguous or unclear. And then for all those reasons, I think it's easier just to think of starting from scratch.
Yep, okay.
Jackie, I have one other thing to add.
Go ahead, Arlene.
Regulations be clear, very clear about where the authority for zoning administrator is to be able to make decisions. And the decision could then be appealed as opposed to having to go before the board. And the example is a very most recent thing with the Mary Cross School where uh by. I don't know, by some logistics, because public facilities include schools and there's conditional use approval that's needed for any structure. We were dealing now with a very small structure, which was essentially a path to make. The forest accessible to any disabled. Uh, any disabled school child, but it seemed that it was such a small. Issue and we all had to go there and see it and it made a big ruckus. And it was one of the things that seemed to me that it. And it was one of the things that seemed to me that it was so simple.
Yes.
That it really maybe should have had been within the authority of the zoning administrator. So it, I think just looking for clarity of what the zoning administrator can do and what needs to come before the board.
And I'll add one other matter and then I promise to shut up. My biggest frustration, uh, from serving on both groups is, um, the lack of any enforcement in the town of Norwich. So there are, and there are plenty of examples. We had a case where uh, an applicant said they weren't cutting down that they weren't going to expose what they proposed to be a house site. Uh, uh, they weren't going to expose it to traffic or, or the public because the tree line will be intact. If that person decided to cut down those trees, there's nothing to stop them. Uh, we had another example, um, maybe two, three years ago now that really sticks with me of, um, me having to drive by every day, a, a, a driveway that was put in on the, off the Union Village Road.
Mm hmm.
I hadn't heard a thing about it. What's going on? Well, because there was no permit as, uh, Rod can correct me if I'm wrong, or I could have the details wrong. But the, uh, landowner never sought a permit. Neither you nor we nor anyone had any practical means of, of recourse. There it was, a blatant violation. Uh, you gotta get, you gotta get approval before you put a cut in the road. Didn't happen. And, and there are other examples. That one sticks because I had to drive by it every day and because of other issues having to do with um, my opinion about the project. But, but how do we enforce this stuff? And I'm pretty sure that what I'm bringing up is not actually uh, something we can get very far with right now. But that's my single biggest frustration.
You're saying we can't get very far with it, with the, with the rewrite of the regulations? Is that what you're saying?
We could. I don't, uh, but we certainly don't have personnel to, to, uh,
Oh, I see.
Rod can't be out putting in his gun and driving out and making sure everyone's kosher. He, he, uh, is, we, we have no, we have no practical means of making sure what a property owner says is going to happen. Uh, uh, and that includes the site in which the house is built. If that gets shifted, how do we find out about it? What, what do we do about it? If they go outside the lines that, that they had an engineer draw up on a piece of paper.
Uh huh. Okay. Great. Good. Um, before we get to planning commission questions or comments, um, let me just go around. Dawn, anything you want to add to what's been said or any new issues you want to bring up that are stimulated by this discussion?
No, not a new issue, but, uh, I agree, um, with what was just said. That enforcement is an important, uh, tool in our toolbox. And we should be able to, uh, set fine whatever it takes to keep the town, uh, townspeople following the rules.
Okay. Thanks, Don. So let me, um, go to the planning commission for a moment and, uh, is there any questions that you want to ask or, um, topics you, that we've heard about that you'd like elaborated on from any of the DRB members? Jeff Goodrich, you had something?
Yeah, several things actually. So I'm, I'm not, uh, clear on, uh, which project Richard made reference to or Don made reference to with respect to enforcement, but considering his drive and where he and Melinda live, um, there, there's, there's a dilemma here in the sense that let's say hypothetically on Union Village Road, but at seven twenty, uh, with, with, uh, Blood Hill Road, there was a driveway put in without permits hypothetically. So there's a recourse to that and there can be fines and other things that uh, result from, uh, involving state folks. The dilemma is, you, you know, from my perspective, Rod's not in, in a position to, uh, to report violations. My licensure is not in a place to report violations. But there are state folks who can be called and maybe there's an educational paradigm that says if there are questions about illegal activities like that, I'm going to say it bluntly because it was an after the fact permit that could result in, um, uh, in, in actions taken by the regulatory authorities that our regulations don't cover. So there, there is a whole bunch of enforcement availability out there beyond the town. We just need to be aware of it. Um, you know, that said, I appreciate the reference to Phil's stuff. Um, and, and I, I want to come back to that. One of the key things that I want to focus on personally is, uh, in the mid nineties, we redid the subdivision regulations. The main goal was to orient, uh, when I say we, the town, uh, i- in the context of proximity to downtown, we're trying to promote sustainable principles. Where's the infrastructure? You know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, if there's another regulation in, uh, another subdivision regulation, the state of Vermont or the, the, um, state of New Hampshire that, that, uh, embraces the principles of our nineteen ninety-five-ish regulations, I'm not aware of it. And I'm saying that based on working in more than three hundred municipalities in forty years. I, I think, uh, the purpose or intent of our regulations is to promote smart growth principles. That was the goal. So, uh, for me, I, I just want to comment on Rod's comment about from scratch. I, I'd like to understand what he meant by that. I think the principles in the regulations are, um, are, are very good. I think the question is how do you integrate subdivision regulations and zoning regulations as one document is a valid point and worthy of consideration, including the refinements that are, that were contemplated by Phil and what others on the DRB have suggested.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. You remind me, I just want to point out to everyone that, um, Phil's document is in the packet for this meeting. It's the first document behind the agenda. So if anyone hasn't seen that already, that's where it is. Um, Ernie, you had your hand up?
Yeah. First of all, I just wanted to say that, um, what, what, uh, Arlene and Richard said um, really struck a chord with me because it is exactly one of the most important reasons why I want to be on the planning commission because I remember, first of all, uh, the DRB was always very sensitive to the, their re- uh, obligation to often interpret um, the regulations because they were either loopholes or ambiguities or a, a number of problems. And so the DRB felt that it had to fill in the hole and was often very concerned about precedents that it might set. Um, and that really, I don't know if the DRB actually felt that it was its obligation to, but it had no alternative because it was no, no way to deal with stuff. For instance, PUDs were really pretty problematic because they're, the, 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 the regulations on PUDs is really wide open and, and, and has actually some conflicting language built right into it. Um, and that caused us, you know, quite a bit of consternation. So, you know, I, I hear what they're saying. And, you know, I, I, that, this is the reason I'm here. And, and now on the planning commission because this is exactly what needs to be addressed. It's, it's may not be the only thing that the DRB is concerned about or anything, but certainly what I heard eh, eh, big time tonight from these two people and, you know, and they're absolutely correct. The, there is, there is a problem with the way those, those regulations are drafted and they are cumbersome to use. Every single thing that both of them said and probably more, um, is, is true about the regulations. They are not good. They're not well drafted and they're difficult to use.
Mm hmm. Okay. Okay. Melissa, any clarification that, um, is up to you?
I don't think I have anything right now, but this has been really helpful. So I appreciate it.
Thanks, Melissa. Brian, go ahead.
Thanks, Jackie. And thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Uh, I really, really appreciate uh, the comments, uh, and the suggestions. Uh, Rod or Jackie, maybe I could ask, uh, in the packet, we have the table of contents, that we have the table of contents of Phil's edits, but not the substance of them. Is that something that you could share with us?
It's actually the whole document and.
It is. Yeah, it's the, it's the whole thing, Brian. It's, I, I, I'm not sure if you were here at the beginning, so, so what I, I just printed the packet off for the purposes of tonight. And so it's, um, I was about to lick my finger, but I can't because I have a mask on. Uh, one, two.
It's four pages.
It's four pages and it, it looks, it looks like a table of contents. But when you look at it on the screen, it's color coded. And so it's just, it's just the, um, subheads of each section of the regulations that, that Phil was working through. And then he's color coded them on the basis of whether he thought that, um, that changes had been made, minor changes were needed, major changes were needed, or that no change at all was needed. And so.
What I'm saying is there's no like red line version of the actual document beyond this.
No.
His stories of what he did, which are not tracked in any way that we can see.
Uh, this is, this, this, this is, this is sort of, this is what we have right now.
All right. That's helpful. Um, okay. So to the members of the DRB, again, thank you. Um, I think there are, you know, I imagine this is the first of many conversations and just the first set of many, uh, suggested revisions. And I, I can't really see disagreeing with any of them. Are my, I think where, where we have value is not on an, on what I would call like an operational level. Um, I, I think like our biggest, uh, you know, role in, in guiding Rod uh, is on a policy le- level and ensuring that the operational components link to the purpose and the, and kind of the, the vision that's kind of front loaded in these two documents. So I'd, I'd like to hear your perspective, some of you from many years of working with these, uh, rules is do the requirements respond to the purpose? And some of this will be addressed in a study that, that we're going to have done independently. But do you think they're working as a collective to do things like focus development in the village, as Jeff mentioned? Uh, and to respond to some of the other needs? Or do you feel like each individual decision is its own thing and not part of a collective whole? I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, I'll try. I, you know, um, it, it, it's easy to not complain, but to say, look, this should be written, we should format it differently, et cetera. But, uh, as, as many changes was with the DRB would like to see happen. And, uh, and that includes making things simpler to interpret. Here we are. Um, we haven't been sued. We haven't run into any total dumpster way. We've brought through, we have, we have had to turn the bag upside down a few times. Um, and there are frustrations, but, but, um, um, the regulations, the DRB is following, that's my, that's my interpretation. You write the rules, we interpret them when there's an applicant who wants to get something done or undone. Uh, and that pretty much has worked. It's worked pretty well. I don't think we're here because there's a crisis. Does that answer your question? I'm not.
No, I know. If I could quickly respond, Jackie, uh, thanks for that. That, that wasn't my question. My, my question is, do you feel that the rules as written are letting you make decisions in line with the purpose and kind of the guiding principles? Or do you think the rules as written are fine and you're, you're, you know, with some fighting, you're able to get through them, but they're not leading to a collective vision? Does that make more sense?
Uh, yeah, that's what I thought your question was. Um, and this is, uh, uh, and the answer might be different. But, um, for me, although we are applying the regulations to, um, to whatever, whatever application is before us, um, it's always in the back of my mind about what it is that the whole document is trying to do. And now I'm really very conscious of what's in the new town plan. The new town plan, I do, I don't think that the land use regulations as they're written now are particularly focused on the new town plan. So I think that's an area where you're just going to have to do some rewriting or some thinking. Sometimes we have cases where we had one recently where although we know what the town wants to do and would need to do, um, the application before us clearly did not meet the requirements of the regulations. And so it's a tough decision when you have to turn something down that you think would really be consistent with the town's needs and with the town plan, but it just doesn't work in terms of land use. I don't know if that's an answer, but.
Hmm. Sounds like there's, it sounds like there's some conflict. Yeah. In, in both directions. Yeah. Yeah. We, we have items that don't seem to support the direct plan and it's, um, but, and yet it, it, um, the, the current regs support those, I, those projects move forward. We have other projects that are maybe are in support of the town vision, but there are other regulations in the way of approval, I think is what I heard you say. Uh, it's a mixed bag. It's a mixed bag. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Um. Jeff, I want to hear from Leah and then you. Is that okay? Has she had her hand up before? Okay. Thank you. Leah, go ahead.
Hi. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for joining. I really appreciate where the start of this conversation is going. Um, I, I'm al- I'm always in favor for approachability of information. So the suggestions of reformatting that was made today, um, I look forward to being a part of it. I had a couple of questions that maybe are answered now, but it, I have a feeling they'll be answered later. So one was, um, Arlene, you mentioned, um, you referenced like other town, other towns. And I, I just thought as we move forward, if reformatting is the question at hand, do you have suggestions of, these are the ones we looked at that we liked, um, for formatting purposes? And it was that shared? That's one question.
Um, yeah, I saw bits and pieces. I didn't read a whole thing, but then I was looking for something else and I discovered there were all these um, planning kits out there online that have to do with, um, whatever it is that we're doing. I have a feeling that this is something that Rod could easily research.
I have no doubt.
Connections. And I, there's no point in reinventing the wheel. So that if you can find some towns that are reasonably similar to Norwich and you can look at how they have done what they've done. And I'm sure they've just done more recently, um, that I think that would be very helpful. But as I said, I'm not home, so I don't even have my notes.
I have, I, I thank you. I have no doubt that Rod can help make suggestion. I just didn't know if you had one in particular that came to mind. I wanted to ask that. Another question that I had is, it was inferred earlier about, um, this being a large task. And I guess this is a comment for all, um, on both committees. One of the things that we grappled with, with our work with the town plan was project planning. So is there a subject or a suggestion of, hey, whatever you thought how long this would take, add extra week to it, or, or is it really just, we're going to take it as it goes? As far as saying, we were, we thought it would take this long, it actually took that long. To help us plan ahead.
I don't think that's for me, but my answer would be, uh, take as long as you reasonably need. Because if you make a great effort and you leave big holes, then we're left with dealing with the big holes.
For sure.
And also, yeah. Yeah, I would say, yeah, I mean, yeah, I would say, you know, one, one of our next steps at our next meeting, uh, or two is we will be looking at, you know, an outline of a project plan. And, yeah, and, yeah, and that's, that won't be in concrete, but it's something to, you know, give us a feel for the steps that have to be taken and how long they might take and they may take shorter, they may take longer. We have to adjust as time goes on. But, um, yes, looking at a. But um, yes, looking at a uh, project plan is one of our next orders of business for sure.
Thank you.
Great, thanks Leah. Uh, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, so the guiding principle in the mid nineties was, I, I think I have this right. Norwich consists of fourteen thousand acres. We had two acres zoning, possibility of duplexes for each uh, project, which uh, essentially meant fourteen thousand units. And so where we went from essentially one acre zoning to twenty acre zoning in some places, that was the guiding principle based on proximity to downtown and other infrastructure like Route Five South and sustainable principles, if you will. So to me, that's a key guiding principle that I would like to adhere to. Uh, a, a couple of quick comments. So to, to Arlene, uh, it, it's not the job of DRB to address the uh, town plan. It's the job of the DRB to address planning and zoning. Her point is a good one, however, in the context that unless we're in the Act two fifty realm with a residential project uh, that includes more than nine units or a commercial project in excess of ten units, town plan has no bearing on DRB review. So to Arlene's point, I would say if we are going to move forward with respect to uh, refining our regulations and adding the graphics and, and uh, accessibility that have been said earlier, the question I would pose is how do we do that in the context of the current town plan, which is relatively speaking, brand new?
Thanks, Jeff. Um, so let me just ask uh, one more time. I really appreciate all the participation we've had, um, before we move on to our next agenda item. Uh, Rod, is there anything else you wanted to hear about tonight that we missed? Is this a good, good start?
I think this is a good start. Let me just, let me just, I think Jeff Goodrich raised the question of what I meant by starting from scratch. And so what I'd say is that, in terms of the way the document looks and works and functions, it would be starting over. Um, and in the ways that I identified, so making it um, start out as an electronic document, be searchable, contain hot links, contain sketches and drawings to facilitate understanding. Uh, I can go a little bit deeper there. One of the um, real challenges working with the existing regulations every day is that um, the definition section, for instance, is incomplete. There are things in the definition section that don't really turn up in the text of the regulations. And there are definitions in the text of the regulations that don't turn up in the definitions. The second one is more serious than the first one, and there's, and there's several items. And then there's little ones like, for instance, the, the common term demolition is not defined. And the word demolition doesn't turn up in the regulations at all, but demolitions are pretty common activity. Um, it could be more common in Vermont, but you know, it certainly is not unheard of. Um, and so, um, there's just lots of gaps and absences which I would look to fill. I think that the planning commission's role is to, you know, imagine that it's like a Lego structure and you pull all the Lego pieces apart and you've got them on the floor. You're going to reuse those Lego pieces to build the new structure, which is the new document. Um, but you know, you've got a fair amount of latitude. So things like the current solution to what was two acre zoning and, and maybe one of the things that we need to do in coming months is actually explain what an earlier version of Norwich's land use regulations looked like and what the um, predicted outcome of sticking with two acre zoning was going to be. Um, I should say that historically in Vermont, many rural towns um, had so-called two acre zoning. Um, and many still do, um, and it is a key um, explanation for what we would refer to as rural sprawl. So just houses plonked out along the road, roughly somewhere between two and ten acres in size, something such as that. Um, so there was a solution there and it's an imaginative solution and it's good. I um, later on in today's meeting, when I give the directors' report, I'll talk a little bit about the update on the density study that's moving forward. The intent of that is to, is to really analyze what's, what's changed, what's changed in Norwich since the time those regulations were amended in early two thousand and what the, in two thousand two, and what the consequences have been. And whether the regulation, whether the, if you like, the, the regulations are set at the right level or they work in a clear enough way. Those are the kinds of discussions where the planning commission may conclude to leave things that pretty much the way they are. Um, but it would be based on evidence that we get back from that study. It would be based on exploring um, the current settlement patterns and what we think is going to happen in the future. Um, so I hope that helps answer, you know, what we're going to do with the document or, or at least what I hope we're going to do with the document. I think for the most part, I would say that the administrative section of the document is very weak. And that's also uh, in common with lots of other Vermont land use regulations. And it is ambiguous and lacks clarity with regard to the role of the zoning administrator vis a vis the DRB. That's common too. And so I actually have a draft administrative section for uh, review, which I hope that, that the next meeting to circulate and we can talk about that. And that might be a good entry point for some people in the planning commission with less of a background uh, in the DRB regulations. So, um, I got things that I just wanted to make clear that I wasn't actually saying none of the concepts and none of the ideas that are in the existing regulation should make their way to the new regulations. I think they're fine, or um, they just need to be studied and examined um, before they're placed in the context of the new regulations. Uh, that makes it clear. That's about it.
Thanks, Rod. Thanks, Rod. You have a question, uh, Lynda, you had your hand up? Go ahead.
I, I want, before we leave this topic, I have a um, a comment I want to make that's more in the nature of public comment. I see that Richard had something to say, and that's probably relating to his role in the DRB. So I'll wait and let him go first.
Thank you, go ahead.
All right, Jackie, I'm going to have to leave because I am out of town.
Okay.
But thank you so much, all of you, and I really look forward to seeing how hard you're going to work.
Thanks, Arlene. Okay, bye bye. Go ahead, Richard.
Oh, I just want to uh, uh, say something to answer what Roger said. Uh, it, it, when I was on the, on the um, planning commission and we were reviewing the regs and I characterized it earlier as really arduous, almost painful because there was the thickness of the document and how long it took to get through and the technology available. I never quite understood why it all had to be done at once before it sort of grew. That is, it might be more palatable, chunks were lopped off. Make those changes, many of them stand, stand stand independent of each other and then move on. Uh, 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 at least then it won't take three years to get through it all.
So your concern is the length of time that this might take, your concern, Richard?
Well, again, I, I've not been on the planning commission for a long time. And so I don't know the tur- the current dynamics and the pace of the, of how your folks work. But in, in my time, in my time, it was, it was a snail moved ahead of us.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. Um, anybody else? Uh, Jeff Goodrich, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to follow up on what Richard said, just to note that uh, the planning commission uh, can propose regulatory changes to the select board. Uh, so the pace may be regulated, and I'm trying to be polite, by uh, whoever gets elected to the select board.
Any other comments before we close out? Thanks, Jeff. Yep, Lynda Gray, uh, oh wait, John McCabe, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, just to reinforce what uh, Richard Dean and Rod said, uh, yes, reformatting, making the record, uh, town planning and zoning online searchable database that applicants can use as well as town officials would be a big help. And I do like the allergy of, of picking apart the structure.
Thank you, Don. Okay. Uh, alright, Lynda, you had a public comment, you said? Go ahead.
Yeah, more, it's, it's, uh, doesn't relate to, to my position on the DRB. And I just want to alert the planning commission that, so this stems from my role. I'm the Norwich rep on the steering committee, working with our shared town energy coordinator. So I just want to let you know that uh, that, that, that coordinator is working and all the towns support him doing this, trying to pull together like a uh, climate action plan that, that would cover the potentially municipal operations, some suggestions on that municipal policies as well as then efforts to try to uh, influence and educate residents. So that municipal policy stuff includes a various um, zoning, zoning suggestions. So I just want to let you know that a draft of that should be ready in December. So it's plenty of time for you all to see it and react to it. But I wanted to let you know that there will be such a thing uh, for you to um, include in your deliberations.
Yeah, and that would include things like climate friendly building codes and that type of thing, correct, Lynda? Yeah. That's great, yeah, I've seen, seen a draft of that and I think that's, that's really positive. Okay, good, thank you. Okay, um, well, thank you again to DRB. I appreciate you joining us this evening. And um, uh, we're going to go on to the next portion of our meeting. And we, and we understand if you have to do, you won't hurt our feelings.
Bye bye. Thank you all.
Bye bye, thank you. Alright, um, moving on then, uh, next, um, thank you all for your attention on that. Uh, I think it was, I know I got a lot out of that discussion. And our next item on the agenda is the uh, planning commission bylaws. Um, and Brian, you want to take it away? Thanks for your patience on this. We have the right document in now.
Yeah, uh, no problem. And uh, hey, Jackie, and thanks, Rod. Uh, looks like the right version is here. So, you know, I don't want to labor the point. Uh, just go quickly through the three proposed changes. I think it'd be helpful to have these changes. I don't think it's an emergency uh, to do it. Uh, but I think they, they respond to several of the discussions we've had. Uh, and hopefully can put a couple of things to rest at least for a while. So if in the packet you look uh, at the bottom of um, page two, well, it's, it's page eight of the PDF, but two of the by, page two of the bylaws, you'll see there's a suggestion to just give a little more clarity to the process of uh, agenda setting and making clear that uh, the process involves both the preceding meeting as well as the intervening period. Uh, and that uh, what's ultimately presented at the beginning of a meeting is a draft based on those two opportunities to input uh, the agenda. And of course, right there at the beginning of the, the meeting is the third opportunity for everyone uh, to influence the, the agenda for the meeting. So a, a little more clarity than we had, uh, though not nearly the exhaustive detail that you might see in the select board's uh, rules. Uh, the next point is right after that, uh, new point number four. Says that, you know, if the opportunity arises or the need arises for someone to speak on behalf of our group, uh, either our deliberations or our decisions or some action we've, we've taken, um, that that has to be the result of an affirmative decision that we take. And, and of course, we could designate any of us uh, to do that, uh, whether it's the chair, vice chair, or, or anyone else. Um, but that, you know, absent that affirmative action, um, you know, the bylaws would make clear, as they don't currently, uh, that, that nobody's really authorized to speak on behalf of the group. The third uh, proposed change is uh, in this section down at the bottom of that page uh, and on to the next page, um, where there was a bit of a conflict, uh, where it said, uh, you can adopt. Uh, well, here are some very formal rules. And then, you know, one sentence later saying, the planning commission can use any, any meeting uh, structure and rules it, it, it deems helpful. And so uh, following Leah's uh, suggestion, kind of just reframe this to say, um, you'll see at the bottom of uh, page three there, at the discretion of the presiding officer, um, the proceeding shall be conducted um, according to Robert's rules. And, and it says, in general, this entails, and all that text comes from what we had before. So there's no edits to that. Uh, and then following that, it says, however, by agreement, um, it can be conducted uh, more informally. So it just gives more clarity to what, what on the face of it was a conflict in the document. So these three edits are the ones proposed and the ones we've, we've reviewed, reviewed now and had, had an opportunity to think over and could if, if somebody made a motion, uh, approve as changes. And the, the final is adoption of uh, the, the guiding, the guiding principles set out by the select board, which we had in our packet last month. And those speak to, you know, uh, comedy and uh, you know, friendliness and good naturedness and assuming the best in each other, things like that. Uh, we could adopt uh, that as our own vision as well. Um, but, but here you have, uh, at last, uh, the proposed uh, edits to the bylaws. And, you know, happy to talk these through, uh, happy for someone to say, don't bother doing this now. Or of course, someone could make a motion to adopt these changes.
Mm-hmm, okay. Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, so um, when I go to item four, it says, as needed, the voting members present may designate, I'd like to change that to, as needed, a quorum of the PC may designate.
A quorum of the, did you say a quorum, uh, Jeff? I just had trouble hearing you. A quorum of the.
Yeah, quorum of the planning commission may designate. In theory, it can't function without a quorum anyway.
Right.
Uh, I just want to go back to the uh, uh, the law. Uh, so my next comment is uh, at the bottom of page three, item eight, it says, at the discretion of the revising, provide, uh, excuse me, presiding officer or at the request of, to me, that's a conflict. So I would rather say at the discretion of uh, uh, any voting member, if you will. And at the same time, I want to ask, why don't we make Robert's rules the rule? And I'm saying that because since uh, uh, you know, for many years, dealing with many boards and many towns, Robert's rules uh, are the rule. This commission uh, decided to codify Robert's rules in order to avoid uh, what I perceive as uh, some of the egregious things we've faced in the last three years. If we adhere to Robert's rules, it is far more likely that we will conduct ourselves properly in the context of the law. And then uh, let's see, under eight, uh, F, it says uh, uh, neither a motion to table or uh, to take from the table may be repeated until after other actions have taken place. That's not clear for me. I, I think the focus or the intention, I know this is prior language, but it's until other motions have been resolved, it's something like that. And then there are H, under eight, point of order is privileged and may be discussed before the presiding officer makes a decision. And I'd like to replace presiding officer with a PC. Um, I, I think this needs to be a group thing. And then finally, uh, it says, however, by agreement, so the voting members present, I'd like to replace that with a quorum of the PC.
Um, I just want to interrupt you for a second, um, Rod, uh, Jeff's a bit, ready to come, you just have to let him in?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks for those comments, Jeff. Any other um, comments on what's been presented? Yeah, Brian, go ahead.
Sure, I, without reference to any of the other comments, I, I, I just don't think we need to add anything about a, a quorum. You could do that for every. about a quorum. You could do that for every point in the entire document. It's I think it's clear that you need a quorum to take any action. There's no, I think that's less of a substantive change than than the other things that you raised, Jeff.
Thanks, Brian. Other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Brian. Yep.
I'll I'll make a motion to adopt these edits to our bylaws as presented here and previously discussed at several planning commission meetings in accordance with the process for editing and amending our bylaws in the very bylaws we see before us.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Melissa. Any further discussion? Why don't we take a vote then? Do we want to do this by hand raising? I think we can all see each other. I can see everybody anyway. And so I think you all can too. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, I see Brian, I see Melissa, I see Leah, I see Jeff, I see myself. All opposed. I see Jeff, I see Ernie. Okay. All right, the motion carries.
Was that five? Was that five two?
Yes.
Yes, it was. Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
Jackie, just.
I mean, I think, you know, the spirit here is to, you know, conduct ourselves in the best way we can and have, you know, faith in each other. And and so, you know, I'm looking forward to do that.
Let's move on.
Brian, I'm sorry, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to make clear, in my motion, I didn't incorporate the select board guiding principles. We don't have it before. There's a high demand for incorporating those into our own rules sometime in the future. Somebody can make a motion about those. Just want to be clear that the motion covered this text. So thanks.
Correct. Yeah, I understood that. But thank you, Brian, for clarifying. Do we do we want to consider the the select board vision and guiding principles? I know we've looked at it many times. Does anybody want to make a motion on that? Go ahead, Jeff. Yep.
Yeah, it's not in the packet. So maybe put it on the next item, the next agenda.
Yeah, it's what it was referred to because it's been distributed so many times, but.
On the packet. So I'd like to put it on the next agenda if we're going to talk about it.
How does everybody else feel?
Jeff, do you want it on the next agenda? Like, are you proposing it as an agenda item for next?
So it's not part of me what's being offered, Brian, with all due respect, since I don't have it in my pocket.
I I think what I hear Jeff suggesting is that we should put an agenda item on the next meeting for consideration of the select board's rules.
The vision and the guiding.
The guiding principles.
Yeah, I'd like to see whatever was posted on the wall that I distributed the planning commission on the next agenda.
Yep, perfect. Yeah, I was in.
That makes sense. Put on the agenda for next time. Thanks.
Okay, we have liftoff. Thank you. Great. Terrific. Jeff LeBel, thanks for joining us. And our next item on the agenda is you and the Affordable Housing Subcommittee letter.
Well, great. So I don't know. Hopefully, you've had a chance to to see it. But in case you haven't, basically, this is a memo from the Affordable Housing Subcommittee to the Planning Commission, summarizing the results of an analysis that we conducted of the publicly owned properties in Norwich. So this includes properties that are owned by the town or by the fire district. And what we were trying to do is understand the suitability of these properties, potential suitability of these properties for affordable housing. And the reason we were looking at this is just because, as you know, we don't have a lot of affordable housing in Norwich. And one of the biggest obstacles to affordable housing is the high cost of land. And so if the town owns land that it can make available for free or at a reduced cost, that would make the development of affordable housing much more feasible. So that's what the purpose of the analysis was. We did not find the perfect property with, you know, wide open, huge sewer capacity, build 60 units, whatever, you know, we didn't find that. In the real world, we found properties that we think have some potential, but really need some more investigation before we can confirm for sure that they are, you know, suitable sites. So we think they're promising, but they need more analysis. And what we really are looking for is the ability to bring someone on to help us do that analysis. We, there's some analysis we can do as the subcommittee. So getting the green light from whether it's the planning commission or the select board, it's not entirely clear to me. But just getting the green light to move forward is something that we think would be really useful. And in brief, one, there were two different sort of opportunities that we're looking at. One is a property that is located to the north of the transfer station. It's technically part of the same parcel. But there is a large section of probably about 12 acres or more that is undeveloped and north of the transfer station. And there there was at one point in the distant past, there there was a landfill on a portion of that site. So it would be really important to understand where that was and, you know, make sure that we're not doing anything that would be unsafe. But the Vermont State Record suggests that that was only on half an acre. We don't know if that's true, but if so, that's just a tiny portion of the 24 acre site. So what we're looking for is for someone to help us really understand that the, you know, the issues surrounding the site, figure out if there is indeed a, you know, a section that is safe to develop, what the regulatory constraints are. And, you know, we do believe it's there's likely to be good septic capacity there. We do expect that it's likely to be able to drill a well that is upstream from the 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 former landfill was. So that's probably okay. But but this stuff needs to be investigated. So that is sort of one piece of it. The the town has money in the Affordable Housing Fund that could potentially be a source of funding for the investigation. The town also received, I don't know if you guys talked about this earlier, the town has received close to a million dollars of or more than a million dollars, right, in in funding federal recovery funding that has limited uses. And one of those uses is for septic, as sort of sewer water, sewer wastewater infrastructure. So that's just something to keep in mind. There is some money potentially that could be used if needed for that kind of thing. So that's one opportunity. The second opportunity would be to to find isolated sites, individual sites along the property that's owned by the fire district on on kind of proximate to Beaver Meadow Road. And there are a lot of different sort of pieces of that property. And certainly, we wouldn't want to build, I mean, there's a bunch of it's wet, you know, a bunch of it that's sloped. So it's not like all 900 acres can be developed, but we think it's pretty likely that, you know, there's a house site here and there, you know, that, you know, you could find two, three, four sites. You could put duplexes on them. And those properties would probably not be eligible for subsidies. But the way you would make them affordable is by, you know, basically making the land available for free and using duplex construction that is lower, has lower per unit costs. And we would want to ensure that whatever housing is developed on either or both of these sites would be affordable over the long term and not just be, you know, given to someone who could flip it. So we would, part of what we're talking about, the next Affordable Housing Committee is how to ensure sort of long term affordability on these properties. So that's a brief summary. Do Brian or Jeff also on the subcommittee, you guys want to add anything? Brian has his hand up.
Yep, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff, and thank you, Jeff Goodrich, as well, for the thought that you put into this document and the rest of the subcommittee. I think one of the the best outcomes for this honestly is really just to put put our kind of flag in the sand, as it were, and to say, as the select board thinks of larger strategic decisions about the recovery funding, about capital planning, about the fire district, even about, you know, budget for the rec department. These this, these are potential opportunities for the town to very directly put its its money where its mouth is in terms of the goals that are in the plan and the select board's own gen exercises. So I I think just having it, having this on paper as a resource is a is a tremendous help for those other conversations that are ongoing and needed. So thank you, Jeff.
Jeff Goodrich, go ahead.
Yeah, like Brian said, I I'm less aware of Brian's effort, but I assume it'd be significant. And I truly appreciate the energy Jeff put into this. I think between the three of us, there was a lot of effort in this document, which I truly appreciate for for both Brian and Jeff. So to me, a key takeaway with the planning commission is because this is a this is a one time opportunity for the town, I just want to, you know, put in everyone's mind, we get to do this once, whatever it is. And the main issue for me, which I I believe Brian and Jeff both agree with, is the notion of some sort of shared equity paradigm going forward. And I would like to encourage the planning commission to better understand what that means.
Go ahead, Jeff LeBel.
Can I just say one one more thing? So we will be happy to help the planning commission sort of think about and understand the shared equity paradigm. It's on our agenda for next item to kind of be a little clearer about about that. But I I also want to be really clear that I I do agree with Brian about the larger strategic points. But I also think there's a much shorter term issue, which is we would like to move forward with analysis of these properties. And that's going to require some expenditure of dollars. And I don't have a checkbook to write that check. And so somebody is going to need to do that and authorize it.
Yeah, so I just want to echo the just the the praise for getting this work done. I think it's, I I appreciate the thoroughness and the specifics, which are, you know, really helped move the peanut down the field here. And and I think the request, what really the next step here is resources to analyze the specific sites that have been identified. That's what that's what we're asking for, nothing more than that, just the, you know, we've got it, we've got two good leads here, and we need the analysis to confirm what is the possibility here. And what order of magnitude, do we have any sense of, Jeff, what those resources would be, Jeff LeBel, that we would need, any dollar amount that is in our heads? Or is that, is it too?
I don't, but Jeff Goodrich sort of does this kind of thing for a living. So maybe he.
Sure. Go ahead, Jeff Goodrich. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think Jeff touched on the landfill issue. I don't know if it's 50,000. I don't know if it's 250,000. It's that to me is the number one nugget.
For remediation, but I'm just talking about analysis here.
No, I'm talking analysis, even for the Birella paradigm. And Rod and I have both been involved in this sort of thing.
Yeah, 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 it's it's not a cheap, it's not a cheap site to investigate. And so there is funding available from various sources. I don't know how this site would compete with other sites in the region, which is how it's allocated. So, but I I think I think, you know, it's hard, it's hard to put a dollar number on it right now, that site in particular. I think the other sites are probably more readily understood with less money.
Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, so one of the things I talked to Jeff LeBel about, and and I don't recall talking to Brian about this, but if if the planning commission and or the select board would empower the subcommittee to look at how to analyze the site, here's the bottom line. If if the landfill is down gradient from development, it's hydraulically down gradient from where a well may be, who cares what the contamination is with respect to what Jeff LeBel was talking about? That is an entirely different topic than if the Birella program says, here's 250,000. Most consultants are going to burn all of that money for the sake of burning the money, when it has nothing to do with what we're trying to achieve. So sitting here, I think the the secondary issue for me is one of one of hydraulic consideration for wells and one of hydraulic consideration for wastewater.
Which is, which is fast expensive.
Well, so.
Jeff LeBel, go ahead.
All right, let let's try to separate a few things. So first of all, that the the cost of a development consultant to identify properties along River Road is not significant. No, it's not a lot of money, I don't think, right? You know, so I.
Beaver Meadow.
Beaver Meadow, what did I say? Sorry.
River Road or something, yeah, Beaver Meadow, right.
Beaver Meadow Road, right. So 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 that's number one. Number two, as Jeff says, there are a lot of pieces of this analysis that don't require, you know, expensive remediation efforts around the site, you know, the hydraulics and that kind of thing. And so I don't know if we're talking about $5,000. I don't know, Jeff, does that sound like remotely in the right ballpark for those two pieces or less? But that's one one thing. And then the second is, it it's very possible that, and and, you know, having spring someone on can help us just understand the tasks that would be needed to fully unpack the potential of the landfill and everything. But there is, you know, there are suit like monies available for brownfields remediation, which includes analysis of brownfields. And so it may be that that, you know, that would be a suitable next step. But I I certainly don't think the town should be expected to pay for that kind of money, right? So I I don't think we should be talking about asking the town for 50 or 250,000. What we're talking about is a relatively modest sum of money, whether it's 5,000 or 7,000 or whatever, to to assess the development potential of these properties, help us scope out, you know, the non sort of, you know, toxicity, whatever, that that sort of the the issue's not related to the landfill necessarily, but the other pieces. And then help us identify funding sources. If we do need a funding source for brownfields remediation, think about how we might apply for funding for that.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing is.
If that's his hand up too, I don't know if he might disagree with my, do you want to hear him first?
Yeah, okay. Jeff Goodrich, go ahead.
Yeah, the the hydrological analysis for wastewater is probably going to be in the realm of 7,500 bucks or so. If it's if it's water upgrading from the site, arguably, you know, it could be 10 to 20 K, maybe, I'm just guessing. With back to what Rod Francis said, which I agree with. If we're going to look at brownfield considerations, we'd have to partner with probably GME DC, see if we get picked. And then the the broader issue is it's 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 irrelevant if the landfill site is down gradient or hydraulically below whatever we're posing upgrading from the landfill site.
So isn't the first job one then is to specifically identify where is the site? That's what I was thinking about. I mean, go ahead, Rod.
One of the challenges is that there is no, there is no mapped definition of the old landfill. And so I don't believe that the half acre designation is an accurate representation of the total area occupied by the old landfill. We also don't have monitoring wells or other devices that would help us conclude whether there is contamination, contamination is spreading. And so I just want to caution people that when you.
That's right.
That when you, that when you go, when you go asking questions of various subunits of the Department of Environmental Conservation, you have to be cognizant of what happens once you start asking questions, and then you kind of lose control of the ball. And by the time they're finished with it, it's a completely different question, and it's a completely different thing. So I don't know. And then the other part I don't know about is I I'm fairly familiar with the Brownfields program. I've not seen it used to remediate a landfill. I've seen it used to remediate private waste dumps. So, you know, think of a large factory or a complex of factories that have, over the years, dumped waste on site, either intentionally or in a. dumped waste on site, either intentionally or inadvertently, that qualifies for cleanup. But a publicly owned landfill, I've never seen as in Vermont as part of the program. So I don't know whether it's a qualifying site in that regard. So there's questions that we need to ask about the program. We probably need to ask them delicately at first for fear of actually exciting some interest in the site that we actually don't want if we don't know the answer yet. So it's definitely something that I would proceed with very cautiously.
Does it make any sense? This is a question for Jeff Lebel. Could we could we start with the Beaver Meadow exploration and see where that lands us? You know what I'm saying? Because yeah, we're testing the, we're testing the waters all over the place here. And and rather than, you know, and so let's let's test it where we have a clearer picture of what some of the answers might be. Does that make any sense to you, Jeff Lebel?
No, I I definitely think we should move forward with both of these in in parallel. So that means moving forward with and looking into what are the options for the other site, you know, on, you know, but I am I I think we need to figure, I mean, you know, it's a big piece of parcel. We don't know this for sure, the size of the of the landfill. It could be a half acre. I don't know what Rod's the basis is for him saying it's definitely not a half acre when that's what's in the state records. I I think it's fair to say we don't know for sure what it is, but maybe he has information that I don't have, but I'm not aware. And I don't think he can hear me right now. Maybe he can. But so Rod, if you do you have information that I'm not aware of that says that it's definitely larger than half an acre? Or you're just saying we don't know for sure what it is? Because I I just want to make sure I understand.
But what I'm saying is that we don't know for sure.
Okay.
So, and and there's a way in which the databases is filled with with a value in the area occupied. It's almost like a placemaker rather than an accurate representation of the size of the landfill. So in the last part is a half acre landfill is a very tiny landfill. I mean, it was operating in the 1950s and the 1960s. You don't get a lot of Buicks in a half an acre. That's the kind of stuff that's dumped there. Right? It's car bodies and tires and wheels and agricultural structures and junk metal buildings, it's and household waste. So it was just run as your good old fashioned regular landfill, and I'm sure pretty sure that they had fires there as well on a regular basis to deal with used motor oil and car tires. So, you know, it's you just got to imagine what how a landfill was managed in the 1950s and 1960s is highly unlikely. It was kept compact because the land was thought to be so valuable. It's half an acre, like I said, is is tiny. It's inconceivable to think of you actually having a rural landfill that is half an acre.
All I know it's what's in the state database.
I know what I'm, I think what I'm flagging is I take that with a grain of salt, and I'm, I would be very concerned about taking the next step and trying to poke that there. So.
Well, I, yeah, I hear you. I appreciate that. I I do think we should move forward with certainly think we should move forward with the Beaver Meadow properties. That makes a lot of sense. It's very inexpensive to at least scout out the sites. I I also think, you know, before we make a lot of assumptions about about the the other site, we should try to get more information, you know, like the state knows that we have a landfill there and is not making any requirements. So it's it could very well be that there are no requirements associated with maintaining an old landfill due to whatever the date is. I don't know, but we should find out what the rules are, right? And so, you know, it may be that they're perfectly aware, and then they don't care, you know, if it's before 1963 or whatever. I don't know, right? I mean, but let's find out that information before we jump to conclusions that suggest that we're somehow, you know, raising some kind of huge liability. So I, let's try to find out information and get a better sense of what the what the issues are rather than making assumptions.
I think Ernie was next, and then Brian.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. It's particularly about the Beaver Meadow property. The first thing is that this seems to fly in the face of the commitment in the town plan to combat climate change, because now you've got a number of pieces of property, a number of housing developments that would be have to be driven back and forth. Basically, you're increasing the per capita carbon dioxide load right there. It also we're talking about sprawl and and conflict with the fire forest blocks and so on. That's, I think, a problem with the plan. And I think the attitude that the housing wealth, somebody has with conservation of land in a rural region is just out of place. So I'm not, I I have to say that I find this 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 plan completely objectionable. The talk or discussion, I should say, about affordable housing in the past has always been keeping it close and in walking distance of the village and other resources. I don't see that 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 will not happen on Beaver Meadow Road. I mean, you're already two to three miles out of town and up to four and five miles out of town, once you start going down literally that road. And I don't see, again, first of all, there's the climate change, and then I see this, this, you know, you're making people walk, you're just adding more more typical suburban sprawl to the town. You're not and 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 how the and and finally, who's going to actually, if let's say the town gives the land away to somebody, who is going to give the land actually to? A developer who's going to go to sell the profit, sell the housing supposedly at lower cost than the market, you know, this, I I don't see any kind of social positive positivity when there's a profit motive involved in anything, not just this process, but anything that involves profit. Right off the bat, to me, means it's about profit. It's not about people, even though it says it's about the people. And you can't, I mean, nothing's going to change that because I see that all the time. I fight this as a lawyer all the time.
You want, I'm sorry, Jeff, did you want to respond?
That's my opinion.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. You know, you've read some good points. Let me address the the last point first. The the plan here is to ensure long term affordability through binding legal covenants and not just to give it to a developer and hope for the best, you know, the idea is to create a lasting asset that would rent or sell at levels that are below the current market levels so that people who cannot currently afford a home in Norwich can afford it. So that you know, and exactly whether that's using a developer or not using developer, and that's, you know, that's down the road. But so and then in terms of the the location, I mean, I, you're certainly right. I think that if we were to propose a larger developed scale development, like a multifamily development of 15 units or whatever, we would want that to be much closer to town. And ideally, if we had land closer to town, you know, we would, we would use it. The land that's closer to town is currently being occupied by parks and would be very controversial to try to develop. So we're doing the best with what we have. I will say this, that the alternative to homes on Beaver Meadow Road, which are maybe three miles from town on an excellent road, are, you know, people moving to all kinds of places that are much further away, right, like Clermont? And in various towns that are 20, 30, 40 miles south of here. And so I actually think that that a home that is three miles from the center of Norwich is much closer to a job center and to retail centers than the homes that folks would be occupying otherwise. So I think it's really important to view this in the regional context and not just sort of view this only in a Norwich centric context. What we're trying to do is create homes that are proximate to jobs within a, you know, a five mile or six mile radius of 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 jobs, and this certainly qualifies.
Ryan, you had your hand up before?
Yeah, thanks. Jeff, what would you like of us? Are you looking for an endorsement? Are you looking for, you know, a sense of the group? You know, the, as you said, the the end target for this, the audience is the select board, other than informing the Planning Commission. Do you want us to do anything?
Well, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee cannot go directly to the Select Board. So whatever the request is presumably has to come from the Planning Commission. So I, you know, I I don't know the right process, but I do know that we, I would like to, you know, have the funds to move forward initially with a Beaver Meadow property to really be able to scope it out and investigate it and present a much more concrete plan. You know, at that point, if if Ernie and others have have concerns about it, we'll have a specific plan that we can address, that will talk about where the sites are and how many sites there are, and we'll have, you know, be able to attach the specifics around how that those properties would be developed and and what they would sell for and all that, right? So that's what I would like in the short term. I also would like to figure out how do we investigate the regulatory issues around the landfill site in a way that is, you know, doesn't expose us as as Rod is concerned to to, you know, the possibility, right? Of 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 there being a problem. So the first step would be to figure out what are the legal requirements applicable to a landfill of that age? And if there it's very clear that there are no requirements, then I don't think there's a lot of harm in necessarily asking a question and figuring out if we can get brownfields funding and, you know, figuring out what kind of consultant we needed. So I, you know, I like the idea of starting with the brownfields with the Beaver Meadow site first.
Okay, that's, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. Ernie, anything new you wanted to add? I'm going to try to wrap this up since it's
I I have a lot to say about this.
And Leah has a hand up too, I think.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I disagree with your assessment about the desirability of people and and the idea of people wanting to move into Norwich who are of the moderate income strat, okay? Early on in the, when we were developing the town plan and we were interviewing various and sundry people, I was on a group that interviewed planners. And a very prestigious and very accurate planner told our group point blank that no one in in all this big planning that's going on across the river, there's this whatever they think they're going to be growing here is going to be coming from outside this region and moving into Norwich. It's not going to happen. Doug Kennedy point made that patently clear. It's not going to happen. He doesn't see these people moving here. He doesn't see what they want here in this town under any circumstances. So what you're, so you're not going to be finding the kind of people that are going to be working at the so called, well, let me put it this way, 33 years ago, when I moved here, there was a very similar bunch of hubbub about how this was going to become the Route 128 of the North. And having been a denizen of Route 128, I knew what I was, I thought I knew what I was expecting, except none of it happened. Absolutely nothing happened. What happened is is Norwich, instead of becoming a nice mixed Mecca of all kinds of different people who would come up here from from and hand over and all these surrounding towns, we got nothing but a monoculture of very well to do people. And have driven out the people that were here before people like me got here. So there are very few. We're Suzanne Lupien, for instance, or Steve Toms, other people like that who grew up in this town. They can't come here either anymore. And they won't come here under under the circumstances that you're talking about. And what I I I really don't understand is why there's this drumbeat of you're going to try and bring people in here that probably wouldn't come here at all if they were just told, go to, you've got to go north and and see if you can find a find a job and a home.
Okay.
That's not going to happen here. And I don't know where this is coming from. I think it's wishful thinking.
Thanks, Ernie.
Like I said, there's a prestigious and well known planner who has twice saved this town from doing really stupid things in the past when a similar sort of scare of, oh, we need to do all kinds of development. And he said, no, we're not going to have that population. And he was exactly right twice in the 90s. So that guy's, I think, I I think I go along with what that guy's advice is before I'll listen to people who are thinking that this is going to be a repeat of the 19 late 1980s when I moved here.
Okay. Leah, you had your hand up. I just, I want to make sure we acknowledge every
I appreciate it. I I wanted to just say thank you for the detail. I've been listening to a lot. I had a clarification question from what was recently asked of you, Jeff, from Brian. The main questions I had from what was presented was about the cost of the assessments and next steps and timelining. And so from what you last said, you were saying that you wanted my question is, are you needing something regarding dollars in this meeting? Or are you going back to your committee and then coming back to us? And that will be the final decision. That was where I was confused.
I I just want to point out that the Select Board would authorize funds. They are the, they they are the people that can authorize funds. So this would have to be a request from the Planning Commission to the Select Board to authorize funds. Okay.
And I didn't know if we're making that request now or a month from now. That that's where I was confused.
I don't think, I wasn't imagining we would necessarily make the request this moment. I think maybe we could ask Rod and Jeff Goodrich and the subcommittee to come up with a you know, a dollar amount, you know, that might be good for the Beaver Meadow properties to start there.
Yeah.
That would and then we could come back and be a little bit more specific. See, Brian has his hand up. I also saw Rod had his hand up.
Yep, go ahead, Brian.
Thanks. Thanks for your thoughts, Ernie. You know, I think the the vision that you have, I think, you know, a lot of us have sympathy for that. It's, it's really the understanding of I can't convince you here that Norwich needs affordable housing. What I would do is I would suggest that you you go to the Valley News, look in the archives for, you know, the many, many, many references to the Corporate Council group of large employers in the region, including Jeff Goodrich's company, who have you know, for for years and years, recognized the challenges of affordable housing as a barrier to recruitment and retention of employees. The the hospital has is in a particular crisis for its low wage jobs. I would suggest that you seek out that kind of information. I I appreciate Doug Kennedy's analysis, but I I would I I think we're there, we're mixing up cause and effect here. People can't and won't come if there's nowhere to live. And that's what the employers are saying over and over and over. And I cannot believe that Doug would say that if there were affordable homes in a great school district near employers, that people would would not come. I can't believe that because you see in other towns Twin Pines building affordable housing and them having no problem with occupancy. So I would encourage you to seek out those sources of information. And and yeah, I I hope it's helpful.
Rod, you had a comment that wanted to try to wrap this up. Go ahead.
I, well, I want I want to draw your attention to the fact that that Linda Gray's got her hand up and has had it up for a while. But I will try and reach out to Two Rivers and do some background research on the questions to do with the landfill and eligibility for the brownfields program, if if that's helpful. Yep.
That would be great. Thank you, Rod. Linda, you had something?
Okay, it's just a public comment, which is I want to suggest that you ought to perhaps as well investigate the descendants of the donor of the Barrett Memorial Park. That seems like that would be a simple thing to pursue. And the other issue about that the other issue that the subcommittee identifies as being a problem for it would be that you know, residents wouldn't support it. But I kind of think that's an issue for any site that you would have to convince people. So I I encourage you to explore that that particular parcel as well.
I think you did do that, didn't you, Jeff? I think, am I right?
We have not tried to reach out to the descendants. But we we certainly reached the conclusion that you know, if if the, you know, that it would be a good parcel. you know, if, if, you know, it would be a good parcel if it did not have that restriction attached to it. You know, it's close to town. It's a good size. It's in a residential neighborhood. But, you know, we do worry about whether we could obtain that, that permission.
Okay. So I'm, I know, Ernie, you have another comment. Can you make it brief, please? And then we're going to wrap this up. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I cannot take affordable housing seriously unless there is an equal an equal amount of call, an equally serious call for fair wages that provide anybody who works for forty hours within a region to be able to pay for all the necessities they need to participate in the community. That means, that means everybody, that means get rid of low-income nests and moderate housing, the need for moderate housing. Everybody should be getting paid. And if no one's getting those kinds of wages, or if there are sections of people who are getting those kinds, getting low wages so that they need affordable housing, that means we have, we have a problem, a systemic problem, and that it's a systemic problem that certain people actually we want to continue because they're not fighting it. So until I see fighting for fair wages, I don't believe that affordable housing is a sincere effort. I believe it's a profit motive, a profit-driven effort.
Thanks, Ernie. Jeff, I think his next steps here, what I'd like to recommend is the, your subcommittee could narrow this down to the Beaver, you know, zero in on Beaver Meadow as a first step. And, and, and also come back with what, what are the funds that you estimate would be necessary? And bring that letter back to our next meeting. We can consider that for passing along to the select board. Does that sound like a next step for you? In addition, Rod will reach out and get the information on legal requirements for the old landfill and anything you can find out on that. Does that sound right?
So I, yeah, I'm happy to try to come back with a, you know, more specific estimate for consideration. I, I do think that, you know, I would like to see us move forward with you know, with each site, right? In other words, with what it needs, right? And so, you know, I, I don't want to just say we're going to wait a couple of years and come back and talk about that town that, that, you know, the transfer station. So I, I just want to be really clear. I mean, if what the town, if that site really needs more understanding of the legal requirements applicable to older landfills to make sure we're not poking a bear, let's do that, right? If it needs, you know, a consultant to help us figure out what the process is, you know, for, you know, and if we need to understand about the brownfields, I would just like to move forward on these two tracks and not, and not necessarily give that up. And it doesn't mean, I, I, by any means that I'm saying we shouldn't move forward separate. Let's just kind of keep them both moving forward in, in the appropriate way for each property.
Okay, okay. Brian, you had, Claudette has her hand up too. I would like to get to Claudette, but go ahead, Brian.
Jeff, as, as a first step, now that it's a process in our bylaws, would you like us to designate you to present this, this brief study to the select board?
I don't think we're at that point yet. I think what we should do, to be honest, is have a recommendation from the planning commission for funding for a consultant, you know, be kind of done as a motion and then we could go to select or and kind of share that. And maybe at that point, it might be appropriate to be appointed as a, as a representative.
Good suggestion.
I don't think we're ready yet. I think we should wait till we have, you know, a clear recommendation from the planning.
Yeah, because they're going to ask the same questions. I think that's right, Jeff. Thanks. Claudette, did you want to speak?
Melissa looks pained and is.
Melissa's in pain? Wait a minute.
How did you know? I just know I was just strongly agree with what Jeff Lebel said. I don't think we're ready to present anything to the select board yet. So I think we should wait and come up with what the plan would be and find out some more information before we, we go before the select board, besides the, the one member we're discussing in front of right now.
Claudette, can you hear us? And can you, can we hear you? We can't hear you yet. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
My, my point in raising my hand was just if you're talking about Beaver Meadow Road in the Fire District, you need to approach the Fire District, the Prudential Committee. That's not something that the select board can grant. I do not believe.
Understood. I think what the select board would grant though would be the funds to have somebody analyze the sites.
Yeah, but if the Fire District does not want you to analyze the sites, then, you know.
Yeah, Claudette, we, we did speak with the head of the Fire District and they, and they welcomed our examinations of the sites. And they also noted that it's the town of Norwich that has the right to the development rights to those sites. So, you know, we should by all means do this in full partnership with the, with the Fire District, but they, they said, yeah, you want to analyze it? Fine. You know, they're, they didn't seem to have any problem with that.
Good. Does that help, Claudette?
Okay. Yeah, it does. And plus I know that there's, there are covenants and restrictions on some of that Beaver, on that, some of the Fire District plan that you would need to.
Yeah, yeah.
It all needs to be reviewed, right? What we're talking about is we want to do the review necessary to be able to say, okay, here are like two sites or three sites or five sites or whatever. This is where we would propose to put, you know, however many duplexes. And this is about, you know, what we think would be involved and what the level of affordability is. And I should be really clear that we're not talking about housing for poor people here. It's just, we're not, we don't have the housing subsidies to, to bring it down to that level. It's going to be more kind of moderate income homes that rent, that sell at low market levels, but just to be really clear.
Yeah, and I don't know if you have the document in front of you, but it's eight hundred acres that the, of the whole piece of property that is flagged here. And the thought is that there might be a couple of sites where a few duplexes could be built. So we're not talking about a lot of the land, just so you, just so you're clear about that. Okay. It would be, just be a few sites tucked in here and there because most of the land is not even suitable for building. But we think there are a couple of sites that might be, and this, these funds and this consultant would help us affirm that. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So Jeff, let's put this on the agenda again. Thank you very much. And just moving on right now, I, I know we're over for announcements, reports, updates and correspondence. Rod, is there anything you want us to focus on in this section? You're on mute. There you go.
No, I think it's all pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, we have the letter, we have the letter from Steve Flanders on preferred sites in Norwich. Any comment on that?
No, there's no, there's no, no response necessary. And it's, it's, I would describe it as being beside the point.
Because, I mean, we've addressed this question before in terms of who has the authority over where solar, solar is based. And that's the PUC. Okay, thanks. Okay. And then next item. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just spell that out just a little bit more clearly? What, why is this beside, why is this letter beside the point?
Because he's making, he's making an argument about one that Green Mountain Power currently generate, uses predominantly that it doesn't use any fossil fuels, so that it's renewable energy in the first place. And then goes back to the question of Act one seventy-four guidance asking that the planning commission reconsider the policy position and outline in the town plan that unless otherwise noted, Norwich, the lands of Norwich are preferred, will, will receive preferred site status upon the review by the planning director. And then, you know, makes an argument about forest, forest coverage and so forth that are beside the point. So as you, as you know, being involved in drafting the town plan, the Ridgeline Protection Overlay area and other, other overlay districts that explicitly about protecting land understood to have significant cultural or natural properties with, to be protected are already excluded from the preferred site status. And so then it falls to the applicant to make an argument before the PUC that they have, they are proposing a solar installation on lands in Norwich that meet the preferred site status. And so it's beside the point because we've already resolved the issue, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And it's, you know, it's, this is the second or third time we've had communication from Stephen Flanders on the same point. And, you know, there's other, there's other reasons why the planning commission would not contemplate opening the town plan to make one minor adjustment. Even if they did, you know, view his point as having some merit.
Rod, one other note on updates. You mentioned the density study is inching along and then the wastewater.
It's more than, it's, the, the density study is more than an inch. I mean, discuss, final discussions with the contractor.
Great.
With that expectation that they'll commence the density study by the end of the month or early next month. And the wastewater study RFQ is out circulating and the closing date for that, I believe, is November the fifth. And we will be in a situation to appoint contractors to do that wastewater, to do the wastewater study before Thanksgiving.
Great. Brian, you have a question?
Yeah, fully recognizing Rod, the scope and the budget for the density study. Will there be opportunities as the study's in progress for us to monitor the progress and see, see if, if there's, you know, gaps that we may ask the consultant to address or, or kind of once the train leaves the station, we see the final report and that's it.
There'll be an initial, an initial meeting where you'll get to meet the contractors and they'll talk through their process. It's mostly a technical thing that's going to draw heavily on obtaining information from various digital information from various sources within the state, mostly text met passable data layers. And then historic records here in the form of zoning permits, subdivision application permits. And then at the end of their work, they'll be conducting a roundtable discussion with the planning commission on their findings. So that's what's budgeted for. There's the budget calls for about a hundred hours of their work. That's pretty tight. And that includes those two meetings. So any, any extra talking reduces the amount of work that they're going to do. And I would strongly discourage talking to them at all.
Never, never, it would never happen.
And, and, and now that I, now that I've met them, they're not that interested in talking. Okay, so they've been carefully chosen from a small but important group of people that like to stare at their screens all day and they don't like to talk. That's exact, that's exactly what I was looking for.
There's some overlap in those groups.
No, they use sign language, like.
Excellent. That's excellent. Excellent. Excellent choice.
It's what I, it's what I wanted. Yeah. Monosyllabic, monosyllabic, GIS geeks is what, really what I, it's really what I sought out. I'm, I'm very happy to say I found them.
And then Rod, any comment on the ARPA funds? Is there anything that we should be?
Actually Claudette's still here and she's becoming, fast becoming the kind of town point person on this. She can probably elaborate on this a little bit more. She's attended the VLCT Town Fair extravaganza, which looked at this question in detail. What I would say is that people should hold on to their hats a little bit. I think the single biggest constraint is the turnaround time. So the deadline, it sounds like they're a long way out, but you gotta, you gotta draw the money down by twenty twenty-four and then you gotta have it all spent by twenty twenty-six. That doesn't, that sounds like there's plenty of time. But people, you know, who are familiar with the municipal budgeting process and decision-making process, let alone a permitting process on top of that, that is, that is not a long time. To get the vision together, to clarify the project, to turn it into something that will look like a proposal to, to then establish that you're going to get funded for it, which would, along the way, require you to get any kind of land development permits in place and then figure out your match. If that, that was something that was also needed or other funding sources to support the project and then actually finish it by twenty twenty-six, it's ridiculously short. So there's that, to get the work, to get the work done before twenty twenty-six. And so that's the first constraint. And then the second constraint is a more of a philosophical problem or policy problem. So for obvious reasons and for arguably very good reasons, the money is being directed towards those communities that can demonstrate significant need. So the income sensitivity criteria that generally exists with a lot of federal programs are still in play here. So the usual measures are, are used and are important. So number of kids on free and reduced lunch, number of people, you know, on the income spectrum that are below the median county income level and so forth. So those communities that have those demographic attributes will receive more support and those communities that don't likely will receive less. We know we've got about a million dollars. I don't know how well we'd fare looking at other projects that would look to pull in more money over and above the million dollars that we've already got. And I think it's obvious at this point also that it's, we don't have a DPW director. I'm the planning director and I'm working as the town manager. We have a finance director that's been here less than a month. We have a finance assistant that's been here less than that. You know, we're a little short in terms of the bench for really pulling this stuff together and having competitively, competitive applications. And so again, that's for beyond the million dollars. I think we need to be realistic about what our chances are and what we really need to focus on. So with that said, I'm happy to hear from Claudette. And if she contradicts me, that, that would be great, actually.
Claudette, I'm not sure you're still with us. Is any, anything you want to add? Yep, there you go. Okay.
Couple of things I will add. Some of the previous talk had been using the funds to expand the Beaver Meadow sidewalk. That's, that's a non-issue. That won't happen. The funds are not available for that based on, as Rod mentioned, our demographics. Ditto with affordable housing. What the funds can be used for is improving ventilation systems in municipal buildings, enhancing your cybersecurity, anything that has to do with protection of water. The EPA, oh gosh, I can't remember the term. Anything that would be funded under the clean water standards under the EPA would qualify. So, but, and, and we could also grant money to those employers who had frontline workers who were working during the pandemic. That would be money that would be granted to those businesses or organizations.
Right, right. Well, certainly, yep. Certainly we have needs with our municipal building and our cybersecurity for, for sure. Jeff Lebel, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I, I attended a meeting of the Two Rivers Regional Commission where they talked about the funds. And one of the eligible uses that they mentioned was for wastewater projects involving wastewater. And I think it's really important to, to, to note that I, I, you might ask, well, what does wastewater have to do with the, the pandemic? You know, I'm pretty sure it was something that was probably added to a swathe rural states around the country. So I just want to, Claudette, I don't know if you have different information. I could pull up that PowerPoint if it would be helpful.
No, wastewater projects are qualified, are qualified use. I do want to just point out VLCT has a great source of data on this with frequently asked questions. Anybody can access that site.
Yeah, it's really good. Is that, did you get that from the Two Rivers and that kind of thing? The Two Rivers has a nice presentation. There's a couple of good things. Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, the good news about where we are at with the wastewater study is that the conditions for going from a feasibility study into an actual project have got even more generous. So and, and I think that there's kind of a push there. and and I think that there's kind of a push there to to get more projects happening, so of course, we don't, right now, we can't say what we want, because we don't really know what our circumstances or our conditions are, but very soon, as in next spring, we will know the conditions, and then conceivably we'll all have some projects to choose between. And then I think we would be in a good situation with ARPA funds to do something about that, so actually while it would have been nice to have the wastewater study already tucked away just by now, we're not that far behind the eight ball on that one. So that's something, that's something to be good, to be feeling good about.
Yeah, it's good timing.
And also just to, if I can make another point, Jackie.
Sure, yeah, go ahead, Claudette, yeah.
Any project that was in the, or approved after March twenty twenty one, when the federal legislation was passed, is eligible for the funding, so it doesn't need to be a project that we now decide to do. And the second piece of that is because, you know, we, the state has significant surplus of funds, how that is going to all be worked into what trickles down to the towns or various projects is a little bit unknown right now, as is the federal legislation, the infrastructure legislation, if that finally does pass.
Yep, thanks, Claudette, that's helpful, really good, okay. Rod, thanks for that update, I want to move on now to approving our minutes from the September fourteenth meeting, which was in your packet, do we hear a motion?
I'll move.
Thanks, Melissa, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. I see, who do I see? I see Jeff LaBelle, I see Leah, I see Ernie, I see Brian, I see Melissa, I see me, so we're all set there. Six, six in favor. Any other business that we didn't talk about that we should have? Hearing none, let's.
What, what did I, I I just was, I I was partially listening, I I think, what did I just, what was we, just voting for?
The minutes.
The minutes, yes, okay.
Yep, okay, great. Okay, so we're also any, anything more else? Brian, you had something, go ahead.
Yeah, just one quick comment to Linda, who brought up the Barrett Playground. Totally agree, worth digging into that further. This is to my point about strategic decisions. Some recent rec department managers have been approved for that site to deepen its connection to a playground for Norris children. And, you know, on its own, great idea, but, you know, these kinds of things, you can weigh priorities against each other, right, if you have facts on the table, and and the kind of investigation that Jeff has started here can help us make those bigger decisions in the future.
Thanks. Okay. Future meeting schedule and agendas, our next meeting is on November ninth, and after that, December fourteenth. In terms of our agenda for the next meeting, one item that I have here is the affordable housing work, we'll revisit that again that we just talked about, and Rod, you mentioned a draft of what did you mention, as to do with the zoning regs, the administrative procedures or something?
Correct.
Okay, is that, did I have that right, the the draft of administrative procedures? All right, and then how about a I know a few, a few meetings back, I think it was in July, we looked at a timeline, you know, or where we were headed with major projects, what were some milestones, I think it's time to revisit that again. Just, let's look at, you know, over the next six months, what do we see ourselves working on, what are the major milestones, is that okay? Okay.
Jackie, Jeff, Richard suggested that vision document as well.
Oh, yeah, right, and then the vision document, thanks, Brian, okay, no, the vision document. And affordable housing, anything, anybody else has? Seems like enough, right? For November, I think that's plenty, okay, great, all right. And then, I guess, any other public comment from Claudette or Linda or Linda? Everybody's still on mute, so I think that means no. And hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Leah is moving. Someone is seconding Brian, all in favor. I'm seeing all of the hands, thank you very much, Jeff, and I just want to thank you all, I know we went a little bit over tonight, but thank you so much, we covered a lot and much appreciated, all right, see you soon.
Night.